We're gonna make it big. You can see.
Okay.
Um. What are you doing?
The most business to look at, I tried to get into some of these places, but they were chained up and I didn't feel like popping your fence. The graph mothers have actually very nice little arrangement.
Yeah, I mean with that one, we did get the two thirty-nine back, which recommends to disapproval. Just for not being the right variance type, because it is trying to basically double the density. They're requesting that we do a use variance, and I think anyway here. I sent around that memo that kind of comes to the same conclusion for different reasons, but it seems like we're gonna have to have them come back with an application for a use variance instead of the area variance or to find another option. I don't, I don't know what other, I know they looked at um doing like an in-law suite on the house, but.
I I was looking at it, I was on a walk, I'm some.
There was, I can't remember what the reason was.
I just, yeah, but I looked at this, I, you know, I mean, I, I, I looked back a couple times at it. I don't know, I don't know that that's totally impossible for them, I mean. It doesn't, it might not fit the way the house looks in front. If they were to build, because that's where they and then they've got a lot of land on the side, but it's also sloped.
They don't second story?
No, is it single, single story right now?
Yeah, it's a range.
That would be one way to.
They also have a, he's got a garage where he keeps a boat in. They're gonna try to convert the garage.
Cause you, it'd be a much easier variance to have a garage. I think we've got one on today, garage that's closer to the road than the house.
It's a garage, you know, I mean either behind it or put it on stilts or something like that, you know, on pylons. But there because I kept looking, I said, there's gotta be a better way to sticking something in the, in the back forty.
Yeah, so I think, you know, certainly.
Are they gonna, are they gonna make an appearance today?
It's still pretty good.
But yeah. Didn't want it to do behind.
Right, below, but like in front of it. Along, along the driveway.
Not only, not only.
Um, yes, I mean unfortunately, it's one of those ones where you, you wanna help someone else.
Because they're beautiful, it's very well maintained property, they're, you know, they seem like, how about George? Hello, hello, good evening, good evening. It's uh, it it looks like it's uh, you know, I mean, they're very, they're very responsible. Yeah, it's that's why you receive these, these are good citizens.
Yeah, so I think we uh, you know, let them know that based on our own review, the county review, it's definitely gonna have to be a use variance and set the high standards, so if there's other options. They might wanna look into those as more, you know, realistic or simpler outcomes, I mean, really. I don't think there's anything wrong with, you know, any of the ideas that you had, if you wanna say maybe look into these just to give them ideas, but the next one up is congregation to haul at Minches.
Central Park, that's just next to Alphors. And um, the fence, it was every gate was closed. That this is the one that were the buses.
Yeah.
Yeah, the speed they go on to.
Yeah, with a hill, and so I tried to look back, motley group of buildings.
Yeah, basically, they leave, they they sign permission to destroy two structures, build two new structures. They didn't destroy any of them.
Forced another one in there.
And it doesn't have the proper setback, it doesn't have the proper separations. Hazardous in and of itself. And it's not clear, I'm assuming nobody's
Sophie.
Or they've been right now, but it's not that you get into what the status of that building is.
You're looking at it, it seemed like it knows some. I wasn't in defense.
No, I, I, I'm, no, I was not going to either.
I had that two occasions here, I had also the same thing. Uh, the one on the riverside.
Yeah, those are, so if you go to set age two and three, those are violations that are on that central park.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the violations are still open, they haven't, haven't had an appearance yet before town court for the violations. Um, but those are still active, so I mean certainly.
So this is not active.
I mean, we can still, still hear it, I mean, they've been gone, I think, since uh, November or October, so curious what uh, updates they have for us.
Yeah.
But how can we get back to sharing when, I mean, this is never, this is never gonna be right.
Um, yeah.
Did you say two hundred and fifty dollars a day? How many days has it been?
The work is complete. Back when it was going on, it probably went on probably went on for several weeks.
So is this a negotiated amount when they finally come to the table?
No, that's just notes that we put down in our, it's just that we'll refine.
This case doesn't mean anything.
You know, my thousands of dollars, well, I figured that would be easier.
So I think for this one, we definitely have to just see why they're back before us, because it's, it's been a while and, you know, nothing's really changed. They do, you know, in theory, before you can have something demolished before a court, you at least have to give the person their day in, in this court to, to come here to get an approval or not get an approval, at which point you would then take the next step, which would be, you know, obviously a petition with Supreme Court to uh, get rid of the structure, so that would kind of potentially be a next step, depending on, you know, what's decided for this board, but you do have to give them the ability to either get something that's gonna work or not, so.
About safety, there's this open unfinished structure that's, it's quite tall, it's, I I saw it previously when it came before us, it's like a two-story building and it doesn't have closed doors or closed windows and things like that. If there's gonna be people residing there this summer with an open construction site, what are the type of do measures that are in place? Yeah.
What is this?
What's they do, like, can they, can they take, like, porting it off? I mean, I just don't know how you prevent people from going there.
To my knowledge, it's complete.
So they continued working on it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't know if that's worse or better.
And you didn't give them a CO?
No.
There's no CO, they shouldn't be occupying it, so.
So, and so the two hundred and fifty dollar a day deal, is that from December twenty twenty-three when that was written?
I believe so.
Okay.
So they're like thousands.
Yeah.
Now I wonder if when they come to the table, they negotiated and you let them over the book?
That'd be up to the department head, and if they go to court, that'd be up to the judge.
I'll just give the benefit.
So, yeah, I think that one again, you just have to see what they're, what they're looking for today, because it's been, you know, quite some time, probably five months, so. Um, I think the safety questions are good, because I, I was skimming through the minutes from October, and I think there's a lot of questions on like open wires and issues, so we should certainly try to see if those have been rectified. And if not, then maybe give them a recommendation to fence it off or do something that's gonna.
And this was, this was the property that had the duplex, I mean, the two buildings that were supposed to be built, like, put it back, they need to.
Yeah, it was supposed to go where like the.
Oh.
Is this his name or?
Oh.
Uh, next one up is uh, KJ Estates. Um, so we've got KJ Estates, which was it is gonna have a hearing, so this one just didn't end up on the agenda, but the mailings were done, everything was done right notice, but because it wasn't on the agenda, I mean, I don't see anyone here yet, so I don't know if anyone's gonna show, but um, I'm gonna recommend we keep the hearing open for oral as well for next month, just in case someone saw it wasn't on the agenda, it didn't show up. Um, so I, and here they have an application before the planning board, that's basically just hanging out there because there's no water for the project, so we would have to do a pause declaration and then do an EIS, which at this point with no water would result in a denial of the project, so they're just kind of hanging in a bands at the time waiting, so this is just really trying to get checks and things off before they come back to the planning board, so I don't think uh, they're gonna have an issue with, you know, having to wait another month to uh, you know, vote on anything, and this is similar to, I can't remember the specific name anymore, but probably four, four or five months ago, where we had the project that came for just putting the uh, roofs over the decks, so. Yeah, so I would recommend if you are favorable of it voting at the next meeting, but also just making sure you have the conditions that can never be enclosed on the sides, no living space and all of that, I think would be keeping in good shape. Any questions on that one?
It's they write out, it's just an empty piece of web, and I guess now the, the recommendation was that they should join the sidewalks. Or they should not only have internal sidewalks, but also some due to leads. It's kind of far, far in, I mean, it's right across from stage uh, stage, what's it called?
Is it possible, because it's not on the agenda, I don't feel even likely comfortable seeing it and listening to it tonight, we're not gonna take any action, we never even take a public hearing, can we just skip it because it's not on agenda?
It's on the updated one from last night that Jen sent around, so I mean, I, I would say it, it was our, it was it was our miss on it, so we don't, we don't wanna penalize them for it, so I mean, maybe it makes sense just to let whoever shows up for the applicant just kind of update and then say, you know, you weren't on the agenda, sorry, we're gonna vote on it next month anyway, we're holding a public hearing, then just to at least get a little more information if you can. But ultimately, it's up to the board, so I mean, if, if you guys wanna, you know, kick it off to the next meeting, it's I don't have a vote, that's my recommendation, but.
Yeah, I would say during the update, we did, yeah, so, yeah, so I, I had my problems already today. And doing no change.
Were you saying voting or skipping today?
Yeah, we're voting today, we're no change.
I would, I know, but it's not fair for the public to not be informed that it's gonna be on the meeting tonight. Like, I feel like that doesn't seem useful. If I were a member of the public, I would, I would want at least to know that I had had the chance to do my own due diligence.
Yeah, and particularly just given the, the climate right now, I would recommend holding it open, just so it looks like we're ensuring everyone gets their chance.
We did in our court.
Uh, let's see. So there's a question on this next one, the mailings, the receipts were not sent in yet, so there may not be a public hearing if they don't have proof of mailing, and um, we're hoping they would show up a little early.
Were mine, was mine.
So Jordan, you have a chance to, yeah, just so we could go through if they have.
That's an old ones.
They came before us in October twenty twenty-three, and we granted the use request for them to allow planting on their property, and four different sites. This is very, I, I just remember.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's, I, I.
Was that the one that had like four different, like, each one was a different theme?
No, 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 that, that was.
No, 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 they didn't have also different sized tents, like one is like a horse carriage.
Right, but the, the other one was built, that was a good one, that was horse carriage, that was a guy.
No, no, I know, I know, this was.
This is not only gonna be tents, but it's different spots.
Like we need two or some things like that.
Right.
And a treehouse.
And it's a a treehouse.
The property we have is not a.
Treehouse.
This is need to be, or this is the one you just bought on. I don't know if it's an issue or not. It's the second event that he, yeah, forementioned it all.
That other one did come, we had two, we had two of these planting ones. We have one of them down.
I don't know.
No, this is, this is a.
Oh, yeah.
We did.
That's the actual application.
So just that they do have a meeting, it's not like they wanna.
Not that I know, but I, I, I thought that that one was, I can't even remember. This one is all the way on Woodburn.
Yeah, that should be.
Wait, are we talking?
I, I don't know, that's your thing.
Yeah, no, it definitely should be, because they're.
They can't proceed or not, wrong.
They also came.
Yeah, so they're testing to.
Yes, they did, and we had the farmer, the guy who has horse farm, he spoke on a Zoom, and they represented.
Yes.
So the proxy version was not authorized, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Two pages now, the only proxy.
We did have them.
So you remember who uh, what was left, what?
So this sounds like they're, they're nothing, they're game, and they want to hit a certain beat, I would say. Which is certainly surpassed, because it changes the.
The name.
What's the wrong name? No, you were right.
Two oh five, Mer- Mary's.
No, this is two to two, sorry. No, this is two to two. Is this current or you looking at this? Oh, sorry. Let me cut you off here, you want to turn pages? One, well, no, the first page. Next. Next, you have this?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. This? This? Horse proxy? Sorry, this, aside, other.
What is this one, and if you go to uh, so if you go to the end.
No, 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 go to the, listen, this two pages or something.
Yeah, no, no, I saw that, but go to the end, in fact, just to see.
Was it this?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you had the same appearance.
This was the day, what's the problem, this year, last year, a couple years, what's the problem?
Then again, I think it must be notarized if there's somebody else presenting, but it's like.
They actually, they came in afterwards with it?
Yeah, go to the end and see, see who has that too.
This one, it's not notarized.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Yeah. Because they're only wanting to be notarized, and then, then the rest could be copies, like this.
I mean, with this. Yeah, because that's the same.
I have the original, but I don't have a notary.
Yeah.
I told him, that's what he had to determine, I, I, yeah, yeah.
David Yar owns.
Here, and is there issue? I don't know, I'm so used, so.
He's still gonna live on the property.
Well, I mean, that should be David. Yeah, just infirmity.
He wants to enjoy the site and the activity, they want.
Is it properly filled out, this application, do we have to postpone it?
So I'm gonna recommend postponing this one, because we've got the question of the legal notice, whether it went out or not. The application itself is not notarized.
Yeah.
And there's no date on the legal notice either. So I mean, on those two, on those two application defects, I think probably are gonna need to, to kick that one out, just for them to fill it out properly.
We should also let them know the terms of a use variance, so that they can give us a form proper.
Yeah, there's not, not much there. So I've got plenty of time.
We could map.
Turn on the screen so we can see who's there.
No, that's a.
No.
What are you, no, no, you're. So yeah, I mean, any other questions on uh, on Hopeful and Atone?
No.
And the final one is Nave Shalom, which is looking for a height increase, uh, so this building, it's section three ten down here, three ten, three D, I think allows for reconstruction of a non-conforming use, but there's a difference if it's if it basically is deconstructed forty-nine percent and less, or if it's fifty percent and more, so here the understanding is it was well over fifty percent, so when that happens, you have to meet the actual criteria and the uh, setbacks, height requirements and everything as they currently exist in the code, so here, the prior building was over thirty-five feet.
It wasn't begin with, it just a copy paste, it all went burnt down.
Yeah, so it, it, it ends up being the same height, but just the way the code reads if the non-conforming use is deconstructed by more than fifty percent, it has to comply with the thirty-five feet. So basically, um, the project's here to just try to get a variance as far as that seven foot difference goes, my understanding is, I, Jordan, correct me if I'm wrong. The, it's not that it's four stories, it's just um, for the, for the roof, you know, rather than doing a flat roof, it gives it
Well, they have lots of.
A pitched roof.
They have, a lot of the buildings there are slanted roofs.
Architectural.
They're, you know, the cheap, just like one smat, not, not total. It doesn't have, they don't have total pictures in many of the buildings there, again, I can get in, I, there's not, I drove around into many gates, but I saw like rather cheap when built structures with uh, out a um, you know, a proper game room, a roof.
What was the, what was the section of the building setting?
It's three ten, three, or sorry, three ten nine, three D. I think it's nine. Okay, sometimes I can't read mine.
So, so they'd have to go back and build it the way it was?
The way it would have to meet the current, current zoning, so that's right now in that district, basically every district, thirty-five D is the max. So before the, they were before the planning board and that was.
Well, I believe the planning board approved it.
They approved it with thirty-five feet, so now their request is just to allow it to be the height that it was.
An extra seven feet.
Correct.
Now, what do they wanna do with the extra seven feet?
I think we'll have to, to ask, but I believe it's just gonna be uh, attic space, just so they can have the. Well, I think the, the key will be just doing conditions on that, which are only as good as they're enforced, of course, but.
Not, not when you have a slope to, a slope space and you really hit your head up.
I can read the, read the section that Dylan is referencing. If a building that contains a non-conforming use is damaged for any reason to an extent of fifty percent or less of the replacement cost of the building or structure exclusive of land and foundation, it may be repaired, restored, reconstructed, or used as before but not in large. The floor areas that she used building or structures will not exceed the floor area which existed prior to the damage. All repairs shall be, I'm gonna pass it over here, non-conforming, oh no, hold on a second. All repairs will be completed within two years after the damages occurred, so we need to know when it was burnt down.
Yeah.
Yeah, or such, use shall not be rebuilt except as, as a non-conform use, any building that contains a non-conforming use that is damaged in a extent greater than fifty percent shall be used, reconstructed in compliance with the regulations contained in this factor in accordance with the use and both performance applicable to the district and could is located, thus.
The fire occurred last Labor Day, twenty-four.
I would still say that if you don't pay proper uh, any rent you know, move with thirty-five feet, so, I mean, when I was starting.
Now, now the slope group. If it's black, it makes it hard, but it makes it slow, we need that little more.
Why, well, you don't need that way, or anything that's got a, a slope, it's I would go out and do the thirty-five feet, you know, that way. It, it seems to me somewhat.
Nah, I wanna put it back the way it was.
Copy paste.
What, what makes, what makes you?
They were thirty-five, not in one more.
Yeah.
Let them black and white.
It was forty-two.
Higher than them, it was forty-two. Now, because more than fifty percent burn, they have to go to the new code. So they're asking, we wanna put it back the way it was. That's how I understand it.
Oh, that's different, huh? It'll be, and, but I don't know how big is that building, it's a big building.
It's a big building.
So, so the snow and everything, if it's a flat roof, is that they.
Yeah.
It's a happy thing, if it's sloped, it's much, much safer, much easier.
Well, it's, you don't need, you don't need very high ceiling first, like, I can tell you that, I lived in an eighth grade one set, I'm fourteen.
Very funny, or includes like door.
How much did they, they don't wanna go higher than maybe earth, they just want a slope, it's like the one, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess if that's, I, I, I wasn't aware of that, it was forty-two before. Okay. All right. And then, okay, and then Mark Beck is on the uh.
Yes, Mark Beck was on.
They were building there today, but I, I asked Jen, you know, that they have a probably for a building, just not for the accessory building. Okay, all right, we are one minute, so we uh.
Productive work session.
Actually, what are we gonna be hearing? Uh, we're gonna have the we're gonna go through everything, but then some of them are gonna be shorter than others now, since we are missing. It's nice to have a bunch of top of uh, participants. They're lucky that it burnt us down as much as it did.
Well, because they burnt down as much as they did, then they have to consider the new, new regulations. Well, my, my question to these guys was just simply, if we say yes to this, how do we say no to you?
That's a valid question.
That's my.
Except that my grandfather did, you know, because, when our grandfather did, they had a mouth to be ready to go.
This is, you've been always just like that, you're.
All right, seven P M, if you want.
All right, welcome, this is the uh meeting of the Thomas Walberg Zoning Board of Appeals. And um welcome you here, as is customary, I just have to say, this is a grace reform, I'm gonna say very quickly that whatever decisions are made, if there is a variance granted to any of the applicants uh, this is still, does not guarantee a whole cup of water and sewer, given the fact that we have an aging root infrastructure that hasn't done review, repair, uh, so that, that is something that we are duty bound to remind everyone of, um, you can walk away with a variance, but you won't necessarily walk away with water and sewer, given the fact that that is contingent on the current situation with our infrastructure. Um, we last, at the last meeting, um, we um, did not, we approved the minutes contingent on there being.
The meeting's from January, sorry, last night.
Right, this was, and Jen um, was kind enough to put in the additions and the changes as the redactions, uh, not in candidate files, but uh, she um uh, we, so what we will now ask for, if we have a motion to approve the minutes from January, we do not have minutes prepared yet from the last meeting to approve, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting with the amendments to them?
Motion to approve, even though my name still spelled one, but that's not.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, very good. All right, so then we'll move to our agenda. And uh, today we are starting with our old business. Uh, and we'll be hearing from Kevinson, Reece Graff Muller, um, who are requesting an area variance to add a second residence, um, with an agricultural district. Um, well, would then have to be, well, we're not really sure what kind of variance it is, so.
Well, ten acres per residence is the agricultural, so I mean, you know, thirteen point six, and we're trying to put one more residence for my daughter next door, I, over the back. And the only thing that helps.
You said announce your name, so that even though we know.
I'm Terrence Graff Muller.
Speak to the owl.
Oh, I'm Terrence Graff Muller.
Bird wants to hear you.
Four twenty, Cypress Road.
Reece Graff Muller.
Hey, welcome, by the way, I wanna say, commend you on your property, it's really very lovely.
Was that you?
Was that you today?
That was me, who pulled into your driveway, so thank you, but I'll come, we know with the truck.
I said, I think somebody from the town is here.
So when we left last month, the only question was, because I called it a double wide mobile home, which was clearly late, because I see now they're called manufactured homes. And manufactured homes are treated in New York State just like a built-on-site home, as long as it's on some kind of cement slab or foundation according to the New York State law that they passed whenever, so it seemed like an issue last week, last month, that we couldn't put So it seemed like an issue last week, last month, that we couldn't put that kind of home. Now it doesn't seem like a issue, that's why I'm here, I guess, because of this, and you got the lawyers, we're gonna check.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, yeah.
So that was that was the uh.
Um, do you want to open the uh the hearing? There's anyone in the public then?
Well, so the request is clear, it's to still put a separate, not an addition, you have a change.
Yeah, and I don't know if you looked at that today, but.
I looked at I looked at your topography and I tried to envision ways in which you could put. Um, you know, and so when we ask our questions, I'm gonna ask you some questions. But you having made this initial presentation, we're gonna open up the public to public comment. So every presentation for someone even might be new, uh, anyone who makes a presentation, then we uh then open it up to the public, so that the public comment is close, is on the heels of the presentation that it's recent. Uh, we're using the recent factor.
So we sit for that?
You can sit if you can sit for that, you take the front two seats, so that, you know, when we want to ask you a question, we're nearby. Anyone have any questions, anyone who are neighbors or anyone from the public who is aware of this application? Anybody is ready to comment, or does anyone have Zoom? Be now a fair vote of peace. Alright, um, no comments from the public, so then we'll turn it over to our board.
Next public hearing.
Are you doing the math afterwards to consider the rules?
No, we do all of the public hearings first and then we do the public comments.
All the public in my case. Okay.
And so you've been doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought we, so whatever is in is in truth. Okay, I'm sorry, I I was under the impression that we were doing the uh public uh a public that the public comment came after each presentation, okay, alright. Now we'll go to Mr. Skinner uh for presentation. Oh, that's okay. Lucas, oh, Lucas Hopple, right, that's right, I'm sorry, I'll be curious. I, right, yeah, okay, so now we're gonna hear from Lucas Hopple and Mary Bonton, my three girls, um.
Do you have your uh mailing notices?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome back. I believe we uh had the pleasure of your presence.
From Matt.
A while back.
Yeah.
Also, it's a lovely rolling wood, rolling landscape. Uh, very, very beautiful.
Yeah, we're very lucky, yeah.
So I'm Lucas Hopple, two 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 Heathrow, very long New York.
Mari Batoni, um, and yeah, we're we're back to uh after zoning variance. Um, we missed the timeline to um start with the building process. Um, so now we're back to square one, basically. Um, since we've now lived on the land over a year, imagination has, um, you know, created some more.
Ideas.
Ideas, yeah, so we have a couple of other requests this time around. Um, so.
I was thinking you slept. Right.
Um, so initially, well, actually, we have a minute. Can I um show you on this map? Yes, so initially, and you guys have the copy as well. So initially, um, we first, we applied for four glamping units. And these units are.
You didn't want to stand in front of the uh the owl, so that.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, so these, we initially applied for four off-grid uh glamping units. Um, and they were here, 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 and here. And that's what you guys approved um a year and a half ago. Um.
So we had approved.
So um, we, things have changed, um, we have the two of us have been on our own personal journey and we're very much likely typically appealing modalities. And we would like to use, in addition to these, we would like to use the farm as a micro retreat space. Um, so that in um, and so in addition to these four glamping units, we would like to ask for permission to do two other tents. Um, and then, just to give them an idea of the numbers, um, so basically in summer twenty twenty five, um, we'd like to open the camper and then start building um this site here. And then the following summer, we'd like to build these sites here. Um, and then um add a tent either here, either two here, or one here and one here. Um, and in terms of numbers, it means that um in year one, I think this coming summer, if you guys plant a submission, um, a maximum of twelve can form, an additional eight by year two, and then an additional two to four in the following year. Um. The um, yeah, I just woke up.
Do you have a max over there?
Will max out at twenty twenty, twenty two to twenty four, yeah, mhm. Um, and that's if everything's full at the same time, you know. So the goal and the desire and the dream is to hold mini retreats. Um, when that not booked for that, we'll be booking it out, you know, Airbnb individual stays. Um, the the units we showed you last year, it's all like super low impact. Um, the tents, for example, live on a deck that's like less than a foot and a half high. Um, and um, we do bring work collection, we do composting toilets. Um, so it is really low impact, um, and then.
We can post this, if it's if it's helpful.
Yeah.
Some of the the human realities are outlined here. We're thinking about equine therapy, using the horses on the land, um, as an opportunity for folks to come, experience uh a more, I just uh natural, just way of being. Um, we've had a few friends, family come as guinea pigs to kind of map out what kind of experiences we can have. Or I can tell you a little bit about what we've been able to do.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll um.
Do you have a menu of activities, or is it growing, I like. There, as you said, equine therapy is probably a new thing, are there, how many of those new things are there?
Okay, so um, so as of right now, what we're planning for right now is very simple. Uh, a horse grooming experience is is one of the things, so starting like really, I've been working with the horses now for a year. I've become very attached, very bonded with them, and very into with what they can do, like one on one to someone. And so um, where my experience is, you know, limited, and we're starting with, you know, just very simple experiences. So leading, um, I I hear I'll pass with around five guys. Um, so on on there, we've got like, we we leave with the horses. Um, there's been horse grooming experiences, which people really, really love, it's like a two-way street. Um, so it's just very simple. And whenever we have friends over and whenever we have family over, people jump into the routine of like feeding the horses. And that's, you know, it's simple, it's like snack time, feeding time, leading the horses, grooming, it's nothing crazy. As things grow out, we would like to explore bringing professional equine therapies to the farm, equine therapists to the farm, so that they can work with whoever needs it. So that's a future business down the road, which we'd like to, we just, we wanted to tell you all of the plans and all of the visions. So that, yeah.
Kind of variance.
Yeah.
The main thing is that we're we're enlisting the help of our local networks, folks that we know. Uh, practitioners of of several, several different practices, to kind of help us come up with uh protocols, come up with uh uh just different event plans. That we can give to people and have groups enjoy a variety from breathwork to meditation to sound healing. Um, and you say menu, there is a menu in theory, it's all sort of falling in the same format. Uh, and open to, it's open to the public, it's open to curated communities, uh, groups of folks that might want to come. Uh, corporate retreats and um and so it's, there is some leeway and some flexibility in that, but it all sort of comes under the main purview of a retreat space where we can host folks.
So what makes this presentation different than what we had approved you uh for initially? Was that you now have expanded your your offerings and you also want to have more units?
Two more units and then the permission to hold retreats, yeah.
So we understand what we're actually looking at.
Yeah, we.
What we're considering is part of the application.
What's that?
Yeah, what we uh, because we're looking at an application now, essentially, right?
Yeah, two more units, in a nutshell, two more units and retreats.
And a growing list of activities related to them. How does this affect the code?
It's a secondary use. And we're not, it's not an approved use.
So we lay the use variance, we would have to have use variance in in.
I'm trying to pull up the bulk table, does anybody have a bulk table?
I do.
For the closest uses of agri business, but I think you'd want to go to code enforcement and try to get a determination on whether it's that, that might be kind of the simplest way to skip the cap.
Alright, um, so.
Open the hearing.
We open the uh.
Just one last thing, um, I just wanted to show, this is like the gathering space in the middle. So this is um like a very.
Was it a commons?
Yeah, yeah, where any of the functions or gatherings with them.
And is there the walls or is it?
It's all walled in.
It is walled in.
You're you're asking because of the drakes.
Yes.
Yeah, so um, we have a lot of stuff behind that.
So now a public portion for this. Uh, any comments uh from the public, or from the Zoom public?
Backroom.
Good evening, I'm Amy Barkley Carey, I own Maple Woods Farm, uh, we are property neighbors, and I'm also Mari's riding instructor. Uh, so this is a wonderful way to promote and grow agri tourism and agri business in Sullivan County, particularly the town of Fallsburg. Allowing an adventure like this just opens the doors for other farms to also expand on their programs and businesses. And it just, it brings more money into the community and and more summer tourism, um, and to really promote what they're doing. It's a beautiful piece of property, I know every inch of it, I've written on it my my whole life, it's a wonderful place. And there's definitely room for growth here, uh, to promote not only Mari and Lucas, but also my business as well, and as well as uh the Chinese place in in Locksheldrick, the mobile, you know, all these other businesses in the Locksheldrick area, um, as well as the town of Never Saint, right next door with the the reservoir and all the kayaking and and camping and all those other opportunities there. So the the one thing I just want to caution Mari on using is the term therapy. Um, don't use that term, um, working, because therapy is a whole other ballgame. I think what they're going for is more like the the agala and like Lucas was saying, um, the the breathing and the meditation kind of things. Um, the world of equine therapy is a completely other ballgame, where you do need certified uh people to be present at all times, such as as myself, um, and physical therapists and psychiatrists and those kind of things. But they're going for more of the that, um, like the goat, the goat yoke.
The goat yoke, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I, what's your business that you're, so you're still keeping the horse?
So I have Maple Woods Farm, I'm about a mile away from them as the. They're on Muthick Road, I'm on Cole Road in Divine Corner. So I have a riding lesson program, and I travel over to uh work with Mari and the horses.
I see.
Yes, so we are are fully in favor of supporting.
Retirement phase over here, that you were, the barn, the person who has a horse, barn, raising horses. He's still there, but he's transitioning towards you, and you're in a different place, okay?
Yes, but we are.
How are you situated?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted to know how you're situated.
Okay, yes, we're, we are fully in in support and we're here to help Mari and Lucas whenever they need.
Alright. Uh, anyone else, any any other comments from the public? Alright, so then we move to um. Naveh Shalom. Oh, yes.
I think he was giving a thumbs up.
Anyone on the screen, Frank?
He wants to speak.
You want to speak, did you, sir? Top of the top frame?
He's got to unmute himself.
Hello?
Alright, do I have audio?
No, you don't hear, you please hit it for yourself.
Okay, my my name is Frank Benadec, I live across from Lucas and Mari, they're wonderful people. And for anything they would like to go ahead with, um, I've known them over a year now. And they're they are great neighbors, and I think that they're an asset to the county and to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, um, so that is the last comment.
There's someone else.
Someone else?
Yeah.
You're a friend, he did this stuff to us once before, you brought a lot of people in support of your ideas, okay. Are we gonna hear from the horses? Talk to Mr. Ed, well. Okay, uh, who's the uh the third uh?
Hey, we're Lynn and Jeff Allison, we are immediate next door neighbors. We adjoin the um, the farm that they are, uh, Lucas and Mari are currently residing at. Uh, to the same accord, um, wonderful neighbors, wonderful people, very transparent. Um, have always been very supportive for any idea and all support of all the neighbors um on the road, period. So again, another wonderful condoning, wonderful things about them. So can't speak enough about them and their ideas, wonderful people.
Great Lord blessing.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so I think we, and that finishes uh people on the on Zoom. Nobody else in the audience present? Okay, then we will uh close that portion of um of uh of the public uh public portion, and we are moving on to Naveh Shalom. Also known as Mr. Skinner.
That's the second one.
I'm sorry. Right, no, no, go right, cut the mark. But you're, this is the one on your side. He's also known as Ishida's something. Oh, it was on the time, that's why I drove quiet the first time.
Do you want to address the public or the board now?
Speak to the uh, if you speak to the owl, that will be speaking to everyone.
Naveh Shalom, this is a performing sleepaway camp in the RAC zone. The wake camps are forming, they had a fire this year, last time a year, they had a fire. They burned down a four-story structure and probably burnt down. They're right now looking to rebuild the structure, there's a fifty percent increase of the original structure, of the this about fifty percent increase, the four areas, a thirty five percent increase. Um, but the the building coverage, there's thirty five percent increase, the total four area is a fifty percent increase due to the fact that some of it only had one story. We have done planning board approval for the site plan, however, planning board gave a condition that has to be under thirty five feet, being that. The previous building was forty five percent, was forty five feet, which we have rendering for, we don't have forty two. The previous building was forty five feet, again, the total of that was forty five feet. Um, the middle of the pitch or the roof was about forty four. I can pass it around, if anyone wants to see a little bit better, pass it around a little bit later. The previous building was forty five feet, we're currently building, the building, the building at forty five feet.
So our our applications are wrong?
Yeah, I heard it's not wrong, the previous building was forty five feet, we're looking at building at forty two feet. Yeah, I heard it's not wrong, the previous building was forty five feet, we are looking at building at forty two feet, which is what that could be estimated for.
The assumption was maybe forty two.
Got it, got it, got it.
Building built shorter than it previously was.
But bigger than what the.
Correct, there's expansion there, there's expansion there, it's. It's been expansion, it's a form, but it's a form simply camp in the RAC zone, nobody's not expanded. And they're going to be the, they currently do, they do have access to building with a flat roof, however. Likely it's going to, it's not organized at all, not looking to build it, something is with the fat roof, rather than looking to build it.
Most of the other buildings have flat roofs.
This building being beside this building, eight thousand square foot structure is not going to be nice with that roof.
I didn't understand what you said.
What was the square footage of the building we heard?
Biggest. The previous building was sixty four hundred square, sixty four seventy three square feet in four area. Per floor, this new building.
Per floor? You said sixty four.
The previous building was six thousand four hundred and seventy three.
In total?
In, not total.
Per, per?
Per four. It's a very, it's a very big building, I don't.
And you can see a picture now.
The new building is proposing eight thousand three hundred, eight thousand seven hundred forty three square feet per floor.
Wait, you said eighty thousand seven hundred?
Per four.
Forty three per floor?
Correct, total of twenty six thousand two hundred twenty nine square feet, that's all it's been, the building. We're here at the rendering of our, of our old building. Get an idea of that.
Take pictures of the old ones though?
But we don't have pictures of them, we do have. Rendings are put together, we put together.
That's the old one. I think a dwarf for all of the other buildings.
This was a very good building, it was existing a very good building, they had a very good fire which unfortunately burnt down the building. New building is obviously going to have a, an FDA compliant sprinkler system. So that is going to be an upgrade, I could pass this around if you prefer, if you see a little bit better than the old building.
That, that's the old building.
This is the old building. You would like me to pass around the topics and I'll try to see.
And the old building has a picture of it?
Yeah, so old building has, old building is four stories, the new building is three stories. Variants that we're requesting is not to add additional living area, they just have a picture of it over there.
But you are putting additional area on the, per, per floor. In, in, in. You're increasing the amount of square footage per floor from sixty four to eighty two.
That was very approved by the planning board, by this meeting, that, there's no reason.
So that's not, that's sort of our. Is everything approved?
So it's a non, it's a non-conforming building, not, so it was not conforming for the height. But as far as the other metrics of the building, I mean, there's no issue on those front, it's only the height that we're talking about, so the. The square footage itself. As long as it fits the setbacks, brings everything else, it's, it's a, a non-issue on that front, so it really is just to the.
Just to the height of the building.
Yes, correct.
So what happened, the old building was four stories, this one's four stories.
This one is three stories, this one's three stories, it's going to be a basement as well.
It wasn't very.
So what, what did you do with the new building, excuse me? What did you do in the new building, each floor has a higher ceiling, is that what made the height higher?
And the new building is actually a shorter height than the previous building.
What?
The new building is a shorter height than the previous building, the new building is proposing, we're proposing. It to be a total of forty two feet, the living area is going to end at thirty five feet, where the previous building went up to a total of about. Forty three feet of living area and forty, I'm sorry, forty. Two feet of living area and forty four feet total in height with the roof.
So you're going to, the living area starts at thirty five, stops at.
The, we're all asking questions.
So we, yeah, yeah, okay, well, well, we're done. So one of those, very things we're trying to understand what you're telling us, but we'll hold our peace until afterwards. Okay, so that's, anything else you want to say, Moshe, about it?
Remains.
Well, basically, you presented a request for a variance to be able to.
Correct.
Maybe stuff later, I'm sure, yeah, all right, well, then we will turn to the public for public comment. Please come forward and identify yourself, please.
My name's Peter Carey and the one thing I'd like to say on this one is, the town went to thirty five for a reason. Haven't been at that fire, achieved at that fire, trying to get my ladder truck to that building and. With a much bigger building now, square footage wise, we're going to need more ladder trucks in there, access into there is very limited. And I think going still back up to forty two is, you have to put a ladder truck. Very close to the building at that height to get to those upper floors. And I think that there's a very wise reason why the town went to thirty five feet as a limit. So I just want you to think about that and.
Considered to sharing that, we couldn't know that without your comments. Okay, yes, please.
Hello, everyone, thanks for giving me the chance to speak.
Please, Ari, identify.
My name is Ari Grunhardt, thank you everyone, thank entire board for your service. I saw what Moshe presented, I saw this building beforehand, there was a eyesore, what they're proposing is a beautiful building. It's going to be lower than the old building, this building is going to be fully sprinkled, the chances of the fire bomb having come in there. It's probably zero to none, it's going to be extinguished right before they come in, functioning sprinkler system actually works. And I believe the reason the town has this ordinance of thirty five feet is mostly because of aesthetics. This aesthetic is going to be something beautiful and it's much, it looks much nicer on, on the, with the pitch roof than a flat, but flat it looks like. It doesn't give a nice appearance when you have a nice pitch roof, besides that, that. Pitch moves last, the only nice leaves, nice maintenance, just looks more beautiful, it's more beautiful, so the reason for the thirty five feet is for aesthetics, we're here. Going off of that, it actually helps with the aesthetics. Appreciate you letting me speak, thank you so much.
Sharing that.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who want to comment? Anyone on Zoom? No, nobody? Okay. And I was, KJ was put on the schedule, right? All right, we'll now call upon KJ at Stittich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Glenn Smith.
Come forward Glenn and.
I'm sure the last meeting in February, NKJ Estates, and basically, this is a project on Route fifty two. And Carmel Jacobs Road, not too far from the Locksheldrick Firehouse. Planning board reviewed this through Walton two thousand twenty three, there's fifty two units proposed in twenty six duplex buildings. We got to the point about a year ago with the planning board where they couldn't go any farther because of the water situation in Locksheldrick, so. That's being pursued now, so we couldn't get secret done by the planning boards, we haven't, we're going to go, as soon as the water issues exhaust the Locksheldrick, we tend to go back to the. Planning board to get the site plan approval. In the meantime, each of the units has a deck on the back of the unit, but the intent is for. Either all or majority of the, of the units sometime in the future, owners may want to enclose the decks. Right now.
Close, cover.
Cover, I'm sorry, cover the decks, show the picture in a minute, yes. Right now, the lot, the maximum lot coverage allowed in that zone is twenty five percent, we, we kept it at twenty four point nine percent with all the buildings and the parking lots and sidewalks and everything else. On the property, if every one of the decks is covered, the roof becomes impervious surface. That brings the impervious area to around twenty seven point two percent, something in that range there. We had asked for an area variance to go up to thirty percent for any future sidewalks or various parking spaces or handball courts that may go in the property. I know one of your board's first concerns was with the decks being closed, become livable space. So we have, so this is the project that we've got this past some of, from your board that variants, I want you to see what the product looks like. Basically, none will be enclosed, basically.
Are you giving descriptions of your previous project?
Once we, when we, we.
Yeah, imagine.
So this is basically.
Will we forge to it before?
Yes, these are, I mean, they're all the same, multiple of the same.
You're concerned what, when they come enclosed, you can see they're not, they're not enclosed at all. Yeah, these are not enclosed, these are, this is.
Covering. That's what we are, this is what you're trying to do.
Yes, yeah, you're not going to close it.
No, absolutely.
Since it's Amazon.
Yes, exactly, I, I'm proud to watch what you did, to see that this is all we did on the side of the. And I know another issue the board had was, if we need twenty seven point two percent of coverage, why would you go up to thirty percent? I mean, every, I've had that for years, but after people get in there, move in, they start finding areas that they want to sidewalk here, across, we're going to cut across to a shortcut, so. Like Eli said, we don't want to come back to the board every time we want to add a sidewalk, we also, yesterday got the Sullivan County two thirty nine review, which we're trying to make a local determination. And the county did refer to, we got two thirty nine done a year and a half ago for the planning board process we're going through. Which included a DOT letter, which always comes with the two thirty nine, and in the DOT letter, they. And the two thirty nine review from before, they recommended, actually the same they want sidewalks along Route fifty two. With all the sidewalks on the interior of the site connected to those sidewalks on Route fifty two, which is going to add another one or two percent possibly of walks there, so. That's something the planning board is going to bring up, when we go back to the planning board for final site plan approvals, the point is, we need more sidewalks, so fill the thirty percent, if we have that. Instead of coming back to the board every time we have to add a sidewalk, that's, we think is justified in that sense. The, the county in their March two thousand, two thousand twenty three letter also said the decks on the house appear to need an area variance, what we're doing, we're back here for, for this board. And the other item that we brought to the last meeting, oh, on the SWIP, we had a SWIP smaller pollution dimension plan that was done. In two thousand and twenty three. We're getting a DUC, I brought the first part, very voluminous document, but in the stormwater plan, the main design. For the project was based upon an area of six point four five acres of impervious area. This plan here is like five point. Five point six areas of impervious area, point being we, we, we increase the impervious area for the SWIP computations. So by adding sidewalks wherever and increasing impervious area here, we're still within what was, what the SWIP design was for, so that's what I want to point out to the board.
I just want to add one more thing, based on the zoning, this property would really allow us to do seventy two units. So it's not like we're trying to maximize what we could do, we only proposing fifty two units, I believe, on a property that's zoned for seventy two, so it's not like. We're trying to squeeze whatever we can.
That's a narrow script, it's.
I'm not, I'm just saying, it's mean, it's, all I'm trying to say is that we are already reducing our unit count. Of what is technically allowed, so we're not like trying to overburden the property, you know, just.
So basically, the decks are, we're putting on the building anyway, now we're just putting a roof on the deck, that's usually the only increase, just like the board areas. We're a little bit actually built in for the future sidewalks, we got to add the Route fifty two and now it looks like.
All right, comments from the public, public comment?
Yeah, I was just curious what the zoning.
Come forward and then.
What the zoning already is?
I have your names still here.
My name's Woody Bassing, and I was just curious what the, how the zoning already is for the property.
Well, zoning, the zoning permits duplex home, that's what.
Yeah, no, residential, hamlet, it was.
It was residential.
Residential, residential.
Yeah, I'm a residential.
Hamlet residential.
No.
Is it HR?
HR. The reason I ask, I was, I was at a, a meet in twenty twenty three where I was looking to get a zoning change. So, and then we're in here again for another ask from the town, right?
Well, that was the planning board, this, one part of the property was zoned H R one, one part was R one, it was, it was all changed at the H R zone.
Still asking, it's a zoning for one thing, and now we're coming for a second time to ask the changes only one more time, right? Is that clear? Yeah.
I guess.
That, that's, that's. I just want to make sure we're on the same page with the zoning.
The zoning is, is fixed.
Yeah, that's, that's why, that's what I'm getting at, the zoning was recreation residential, so when he talks about, I'm only building fifty when I'm allowed seventy. Yeah, but previously it was only allowed maybe what, thirty before?
But, but the, the reason why.
So, but now we're going.
We're only here on a, one issue which is just whether they can put a roof on the decks.
Yeah, no, I'm.
That's a one question.
And, and, and I'm just pointing out that we already made changes to the zoning to accommodate, now we're back here. Trying to change the codes again to accommodate. So that's all I'm trying to point out, so zoned that one thing, now zoned that another, and now we're about to go a little bit further on that. Was it not recreation residential like two, three years ago?
What is the status of this?
It's everything, this is.
It's residential.
Correct, it's all.
Recreation residential, hamlet residential, it's clear.
Eighty hour, which is.
Yeah, so it was.
Hamlet, hamlet residential.
So that was just recently rezoned the hamlet residential.
We're not changing any zoning.
It was already changed.
This application is made on the basis of it being.
Yes, and I'm pointing out that we already changed the zoning here to accommodate more building there. Now we're in again, trying to accommodate more dense building on this property, closing more roofs, right? How many times do we got to change the zoning?
The zoning does not get changed in order to put, close the roofs.
He's saying that previously this, this is already had a different, lower density zone. And then I guess the town board must have shifted it so that to accommodate this particular development. And he's saying that this development is now asking for additional lot coverage.
That's happened, that's happened.
Yeah, exactly.
So I just want to respond to drop, not that I'm here to respond, but the reason why the town board gave us that rezoning. Was because this was originally called HR, and when the town did their rezoning, they agreed that it was a mistake that they, they rezoned. Down the middle of a property, so they basically put it back, it was after that.
When was it?
All one zone. Yeah, when was that, when they, in two thousand and eighteen, when they downs them.
Into a split zone.
And then they created a split zone, there was a mistake on the town, on the town at that time, so they just rectified a mistake that was there. And it was done for the previous owner, not for us.
So, so I, I was at all the board meetings for this, all right, and then, so I was in front of it. After you reported when she brought it for an open comment, then she didn't make a decision.
I think.
She heard about covering. Yeah, I'm, I'm just pointing out the same, is it not?
This is a public comment?
Yeah, exactly.
He has to write, it's justifiable public comment.
All right, so you're saying it was a mistake, but I was clearly at when she kicked it down to the, was it the, when the planning board? Where the building inspectors are at, you know, and I clearly remember them all voting no as a recommendation. So for something that should have been corrected for a mistake, why would they all vote to no at that meeting? For the zoning changes, that's all I'm pointing out, is that we keep changing zoning, zoning our variants, that's all I'm pointing out. You're their neighbor? I live on the north end. Yes, that's all I'm pointing out.
All right, now I understand. All right, anyone else, please come forward again? Player chief?
Yeah, I'm just Peter Carey this time. I like playing cheese. Thank you. Got a little already over there, so I just wanted to say that listening to the comments and stuff. To remember, remind you guys that you have to find, figure out the difficulty was self-created. Or if the town created the difficulty for variants, correct? That's one of the, you guys have, that you have to answer.
One of our four questions.
Nothing has been built yet here. If they're already at or bumping up against the coverage, which as I understand, the coverage. It could be zoned to have seventy two units, but if you're already over the coverage with the buildings you have, that's the building coverage that you can have, correct? Something that you guys, you know, nothing's built yet, so what is it to go to fifty one and then you have all the buffer you need for more sidewalks, more parking areas. Whatever you want, cover all of the, you know, enclose those and you'll be covered, so just some thoughts for the board.
Any other comments, anyone about to Zoom?
I want to stay.
Okay.
My name is Ari Grunhardt, thanks for giving me the chance to speak. I've seen all these projects in the past, those beautiful projects, I believe, I'm not sure about it, many towns do not include cover decks as lot coverage. Town falls, it happens to be the code is written that way, so that doesn't mean it adds to more buildings, adds to more, adds to more. More things and, and I think cover decks also, I've seen in the past where someone comes in for a permit to cover his deck. Building department never calculates anything, give him a permit to cover his deck, which might, might happen anyway down the road, so it might, it might have been, might, might be, might be being built.
We're looking for standardization and the Brazos did a very good job with the last project.
The project, I, I would encourage it, thank you so much.
Okay.
I just want to respond to one of the, one of the comments that the prior she said. I don't disagree with you, but I just want to explain to you something, that there's a very easy way for us to reduce the lot coverage both. By doing two story units, but that's something that the town rather sees single story units than a two story unit, but if we were. But if we would take, make a little bit smaller footprints, any single unit, we could go back to sixty, seventy units. We could technically do it, it's, it's a misconception, you can't do that. I could do that, I could make smaller buildings with two-story units, that would be a hundred percent legal, and it would meet code. But we track, we're sacrificing on unit count to make a nicer product that looks more like a summer development as opposed to a real big time housing development. And that's why there's a calculation here, like there's only, there's only so much you could win a piece of property and try to still, you know, make it make sense. If you bring your unit count down even further, it's impossible to do it. So there is, there is a, a given and take over here as well.
Someone on Zoom, what I was.
Uh, yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, uh, I'm Joel Melamet, I live in Carmel, Rome, my family's lived there for, uh, over a hundred years. But I just want to point out, and on Carmel Road, you have woodland townhouses, this new project they're gonna build, you have Edgar Green townhouses, you have State Your Manor, which puts, you know, thousands of people on the road, uh, in the summertime. You have Lux Store, and there's a new building that they want to build right around the cur, uh, course from Lux Store. I'm just, just saying it's like, you know, it's getting like Brooklyn, you know? But I, I just wanted to add that to this, to the town board in the minutes, thank you.
Getting like Woodburn.
Oh, it's getting like Woodburn.
Again, we don't believe covered decks are gonna have any effect on more people, less people on the road. It's, it's not, it's a design, it's a, it's a, it's a design issue, it's not a.
Did you consider warnings, either framed or electronic roll?
We've tried it in one, we've, we've tried it in one development, and it doesn't work.
Why doesn't it work?
Because a lot of these things are not really designed for snow bearing. If your person is there and he wants to spend his winter, he comes up the weekends.
Well, usually people take the warnings down in the winter, excuse me, let me finish my sentence. And a roll-up one, you press a button, it goes down, you press a button, it goes back up. So there's no problem with snow at all. I have one in my house, and it's thirty years old, and I have never had to replace it. We addressed this issue, we actually addressed this issue, okay, okay, we'll go back there, remind me, this would be the best issue of conformity and unity, uh, uniformity.
Anyone else?
All right, anyone else from the, uh, the Zoom world? Okay.
Thank you.
That, with that now, we close the public portions, and, um,
Excuse me, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Maury, uh, Beton and Lucas Heffle, they early closed, we got confused about the location, so we just came in late.
Well, the letter had them on the dress.
Yeah.
So we were.
I just want to make a quick statement.
Okay, all right, all right, you're commended, can we do that out of order?
I mean, yeah, but public here is technically still.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time. Uh, Maury and Lucas are my neighbors, uh, my wife and I moved up here twenty years ago, we were at the last meeting. And for the last year, we've become more familiar with, uh, their, uh, mode of operation. We've witnessed very high-quality people coming in this area for the first time. We've witnessed their property slowly and surely improving, uh, one step at a time, it's a huge enterprise. Uh, we are very happy to see the uptick happening on our adjacent property. And everything that I've, I've been exposed to in our communications, now we're friends. Uh, I have to say, and I have no vested interest in the property, I'm not involved in the business of the property, I'm just watching the quality of our neighborhood, quality of the people coming in, increasing, and I just want to express that as a note of support.
They've just got added to the farm, two more votes.
They brought two more votes in, anyway, so I did, just want to add that, in, in, in light of the very challenging of, of, of projects that, that the board has to deal with and the difficult decisions with the levels of impact, if I may be so audacious to say, this is a very easy decision. Uh, given the nature of lawn impact, uh, no septic system, uh, very light traffic, uh, no, uh, additional electric, and, uh, they are a great asset to our neighborhood, and it's an uphill battle, you know, given what they're trying to do, but they're, they're making a great effort. But thank you.
Okay, with that, we can, uh, close the, uh, public portion, uh, other presentations, and now we have the response to the public comments. Yeah, so we're going back to Terry and Teresa Graffmoller.
Terry and Terry.
Okay, would you like to, uh, do we have?
You had, you had some suggestions, you said, you're right.
Yeah, so we're, we're on old business now, so it's, uh, Graffmoller matter, if you guys want to come back up here, you're gonna get, uh.
Any comments?
Are you, are you the general contractor in the project?
No.
So there is, uh, I mean, what about building, using your garage, for instance? Uh, we have the vote right now, and building out, uh, your house that way, I know, would that solve the topography issue?
There's a bank behind the garage that.
About a thirty-foot drop, right behind, all right.
So there'll be no.
So it has to be narrow, and.
And, and I don't know, you, you didn't get to the back, but there's a forty by.
Afraid that, you know.
We're gonna shot you, but there's a forty by fifty deck back there, around an eighteen by thirty-three old pool, which is a beautiful private backyard, because you can see we set back in a hundred years off, a hundred yards off the road. So we thought about trying to build off the top, run a back right corner, but the well's back there.
And a second floor.
The decks back there, I just installed central air last year, I don't feel like ripping the roof off and tearing up my central air. Plus.
It's just a privacy thing, too.
I have the, I have the privacy of the back deck, so to put my daughter over that thirty-foot bank down by a few trees, I still have what I paid for in nineteen ninety eight, my private backyard, and, and my granddaughter's right down the, over the bank. So I'd still have to drill an extra well and put enhanced septic, even if somehow I attached it to the corner of my house, which then would destroy any privacy of my house, it would then be our house, it would be a two-family house, which isn't really what worked.
Right. And anyone else have any questions to the ground?
Can you pass them back, the, the, with the picture?
Oh, yeah, we dropped, I assure you, you know.
So concern is that the two thirty nines would come back, and they kind of recommended to disapprove, in part because it's, uh, percent of such a increase. Uh, really, it's only allowed a single family, so we're just trying to figure out other ways that you could kind of get what you want it without.
Yeah, and the, the two thirty nine is, uh, under the general municipal law, you have to make, if you're within some boundaries of state, county roads or other municipal boundaries, the county, um, gets the projects, just the filings you provided to us, and then they review it to determine if there's any impact, so when they do that, they provide a determination. So it can either be a local determination, which is the zoning board, you can vote on this, or they can, you know, say it's incomplete, or they can disapprove. So here they recommend this approval. What that means is that for this board to approve the project, they would have to vote with a super majority, which is a majority plus one. Um, the reason that they're recommending this approval, um, has to do with the increase in density, um, and that that would be a use variance rather than an area variance, so you'd have to demonstrate a different set of facts as to why um, you should receive the variance, which has a higher burden than the area variance. So that's kind of what the, the board's been faced with on this one, is the county review came back recommending this approval. Um, so they've been trying to give you some ideas on other.
We're trying to get around it, because the use variance is a very difficult goal, too. It, it really doesn't, it's not what you want, because you're not in a business where, let's say you're changing from one function to another. You're talking about living space, which really should, and we should be dealing with an area here better, but because of the.
That's about its own, it's zone agricultural, we understand that part of it, it's just.
This is not animus as much as it is, uh.
But even punching up, even taking the garage and, and building a second addition on it and making it a four-car garage, uh, because I'm trying to build a three-bedroom two-bath.
Can we add one meeting, everybody?
So.
Sorry, it's just hard to hear up there.
So for a three-bedroom two-bath, you saw the picture of what we picked as, as the most cost-effective way, because I'm talking about spending, you know, two hundred fifty thousand here for my daughter.
But even a, that's big, a driveway, if you were to build an L shape, out from your dri, uh, from the garage, um, and, and then have sort of like the suite, sort of, uh, per, um, at a right angle to.
So maybe like a four-car garage with a second level for the apartment, which would be a three-bedroom two-bath. I mean, I guess it's a possibility.
They don't want to be in the air, but it seems very silly.
And of course, I can't give them their windows, because I still have my private backyard over there, the second store.
If I do it all in the front, but along the side, using the, you know, starting with the garage and building it out, and then you have a separate entrance.
And then we still have to drill a well and, and put septic in for that unit, for sure, that's still, it's still part of the government process.
That's gonna be in any case, I'm just thinking, give them privacy, their own entrance, but at the same time.
Does it have to touch the house, or could I just punch the garage bigger and?
It would have to be contiguous, I guess, to the extension of the house, but you can have these, right, the walls, and, you know.
So now we're talking to stickville, or, you know, I can understand, so certainly not. A hundred and thirty thousand for a unit, it's now.
Right, when there's no four thousand in this county.
I will, you could, you could put patches.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I, that was just to say, what if you attach a manufacturing home to it?
That would be lovely, my gosh. That'd be beautiful.
It's still so cool.
Because it's contiguous, it's active, they share a wall.
Well, I, I just lost my garage, that was nice, but, you know, I, 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 I still gotta build a garage.
Over bank and bank.
And code would have to look into that, so I mean, there's a couple options from here, you know, the first option would be to, to reapply for the use variance, and then.
But you said that would be stiff, so that's.
I mean, it's, it's up to the facts and what the board.
But you, you guys decide the use variance, or does the county, who just turned us down?
It would be this board, it, it's a higher standard, it's, it's not impossible, but, um, you know, that's.
Some of the use, to use.
Unusual questions that we would have to ask you, um, that might not really fit for.
Well, like my daughter's finances and why she can't afford to just go buy a house somewhere else, so we're trying to help her, you know, that's kind of where we're at.
We do need financials.
Yeah, and I, I could certainly make that. Thank you for it.
The way the userian works is that we would need to see why you cannot receive a reasonable return on any of the other uses for agricultural land, it's a really, it's like a misfit in a lot of ways. We would need to see financials for why you couldn't, for example, run an Airbnb, or a house of worship, any, anything else in an agricultural district. It, it's very odd, and I think I would highly recommend a compromise, if that was the line for a use variance, if that's the route that you choose.
Yeah, because shit, well, it's just.
We're trying to shield you now, but.
That's right.
I mean, we're, we're sweating this with the opponents. Um, because we understand how important this is and why it's a good thing to do, and nothing untoward in terms of you wanting to build something for your children. The question is, how can we let, find a way for it to happen? Uh, then, you know, of course, the co-lead, we have to, we're a semi-juridical body, and we have to.
And so the, the variance isn't a good, a good option, or the use variance, it sounds like, because it's agricultural, and, and putting my daughter on it isn't a use. Uh, so the other option would be to bring an architect in and, and get some ideas on how to add to the house and.
With privacy provisions.
Right, so that's our next step, I guess.
Well, we want to send you away with at least an idea.
But still don't give up the idea of requesting a use variance, either. Don't, don't give up those ideas as well, you know?
Well, she wants to make candles, maybe, you know, you know, in her house, or something like that, I don't know.
Well, actually, she has a.
She does that.
She has an LLC that I saw her for a thousand years ago, Kate's Bath and Body, she made her own soaps and stuff, so I, you know. There you go, that's it, that's all I need, I'll, I'll do it tomorrow.
All right, I understand that we're not, we are trying to find a way.
It sounds like the county is, what turned it back to this, right, but with just your decision, I don't know that you would have said no to it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to throw them fully under, I, I reviewed everything, and I, I came to the same conclusion. I don't want to throw them just under the bus, you can throw mine, too.
You know, there could have been a local determination, we don't have that much of a dream.
And there's not a way I go to the county and say, how come? That part of it.
No, it's, it definitely has to be a use variance, yeah, unfortunately, but again, it's not impossible, so you can file a new application and.
Well, I might as well do that while I'm pursuing the other options, just so we see where we're going.
You know, throw as much into the fire as you can.
Right. Okay, uh.
Thanks, we thank you for your patience and freedom.
Thanks for coming and looking.
Have a good night.
Thank you, okay, let's talk some Georgia, you come back any time ago. Look forward to seeing you again soon. All right, um, and now we go to, uh, Lucas and, uh, and Marie? Maury?
Number four? Uh, we're not, no, you're out of, sorry, yes, we're out of order here.
Good afternoon, Moshe out there here on behalf of Central Park, along with, who's the owner of this congregation. This is a family that has come before, that's been in front of the board in the past. We are requesting three variances for building us constructed. Yeah, sure, sorry about this. I think you have the other kind of. Um, this is a comment, I've been in front of the zoning board in the past, the zoning board had a very big issue with aesthetics of the county, John had a good point about this, and Chairman also had a good point, because aesthetics of the county are not the best. In the minutes, it says that the building in front does not look the best.
Doesn't look safe, but the safety, not an aesthetic, so you do.
I believe it was, oh, in a minute.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take both, but I don't want to plant this over the safety part.
Either way. The building has been renovated now, and I'm not sure when it was driven by, the building now has been renovated, it's brand of siding there, it's brand, uh, the roof had just been redone over there. Electric has all been fixed up over there, um, that building has been fixed up fully, that's something that the board had an issue with, and that's something that we have fixed up fully, yes?
I apologize, but for me to understand what you're saying, would you slow down?
Sure. Sorry. There's a building in front of the property, a four-unit building, that the board had an issue with the safety and the looks of it. And that building has now been fixed up fully, it's been renovated nicely. Um, it's brand of siding, the roof is done new, electric is fully redone over there, this is now a nice building. That was a very big issue that the board had with this property, or in the previous meetings. And we are now, we would, we're still requesting the same variances, we're requesting three variances. Originally, they're requesting additional variance to add in additional units, however, we have realized that these two units over here, eight A and eight B, and nine A and nine B are now only one unit, so therefore, we're still at thirty-two units, and we're not expanding the units over there. The con enforcement has done inspection there and verified that, which had the request of, through the attorney requested that. That con enforcement go down there and verify that, that has been done already, and we would have to get any comments.
I think, I want to just clear, because you're sharing some things that are true, but there is a lot here that is not being shared, including that the building that you're talking about in front was supposed to be torn down, and it wasn't. So that's the first issue, it wasn't just built to safety, it wasn't just aesthetic, it was that it was supposed to be torn down in order for other buildings to be constructed, correct?
Sure, so that, you are correct, this is a, this was, um, in twenty sixteen, I believe it was, it was a, by the planning board approved. Then to tear down this building, reconstruct it over here, that has not been done.
Tear down two buildings and reconstruct another one. That was the original, that was what. That was the original, that's what we've been presented previously, so I apologize if I'm wrong, but that's what we've been presented previously, so I just wanna make sure that we all have the correct information.
From my understanding, it's to tear down the four unit building?
Two four unit buildings.
No, it was. Only one, only the, there's no two, there's no four unit building, no two, there's only one.
It was one, I think it was one forty, but one smaller building.
Right, it was two.
Cause it was the. And the building that was supposed to be built by the basketball.
Yes.
Only only one, only one building, only the four unit building.
And a smaller building as well? When we represented this previously, it was to tear down two buildings and build a new structure somewhere else, rather than where it was built.
To turn it, turn this down. This four and to put two twos. One of them in the courtyard. In here, which is gonna really, and then another one was supposed to be. To put. I don't know what the other one was, this two and then another one was supposed to be, I don't have the previous plan. It was here and then another one was supposed to be here, but instead of it only being tore down. It was just rehabbed.
Correct, they then tear down a building, they fix it up, it's been fixed up very nicely, you know.
And another building was added without tearing down any previously.
Correct, another. Another building was added, however, it's not increasing the unit count over there, being that, as discussed in previous meetings. These two units were approved as duplexes originally, in the original site plan, these two units. Eight A, eight B, nine A, nine B are both duplexes. And now they are being used as a single family use, which has been verified by con enforcement.
But one of those is, it has a problem with setbacks.
Uh, there's a new building that the board now has that issue with setbacks, that's why we're here.
Was the verification with code enforcement was that? With Greg or was that with TJ, do you know when that was, or something in writing?
It was Greg, I. I'll try, I'll get uh get a verification on that, at two thousand Greg's times. I believe it was with Mr. Puglianti, was there had that time with a meeting with Greg.
Okay, yeah, we can try to look through records, but if you have anything, you can provide on that, just so. We can. Make sure everything, yeah, everything is reviewed, also, I understand that the the building that was rehabbed. Went for a CO and failed the building inspection in the last month or so.
They're working on that structure now, um it didn't, they had an issue with the steps, where about, they were missing. Code requires, that's have a gap, if there's a gap over five inches. Um they fill in that, and that is. Something that they were fixing, and with any electrical application. It just, my details that we're working on for building permit, that's regular part of the building permit process.
Okay.
So. When we saw this application last, a couple of things. One, there was gonna be a conversation with the adjacent property owners, so that we wouldn't have to grant rear setbacks. That they were gonna present like point two acres to this or uh to this development, so that. We wouldn't have to look at a rear setback, has there been any change on that?
So there has been a discussion, a letter has been submitted to the zoning board.
We didn't receive it.
Letter has been submitted somewhere to the zoning board, I'm not sure if you have a copy of that? Sorry, this never moved here.
To whom have a concern, as the Board of Directors, the Grove Estates Condominium on Laurel Avenue in South Fallsburg, we are aware that we are, we share a property line with Central Park Estates on Route forty two in South Fallsburg, which is owned by congregation. It has come to our attention that Central Park Estates is having difficulty with obtaining a permit for a certain bungalow construction project due to its proximity to the property line between our properties, we have no objection to the construction of the unit. And its proximity to the property line in the Central Park Estates uh side of the property, additionally, we are willing to sell a portion of the land behind said unit to. To the uh to the group in order to allow for an additional fifty feet from the property line. Please feel free to contact us with any further questions, the Board of Directors, the Grove Estates Condominium.
How do we deal with the one foot? The the back step, the side step backs?
No, not, here's the thing that I'm I'm upset about, is we learned before this meeting. That the building that was it that was built without permission, and which buses were placed in front of us in order to hide the construction. Is now finished, whereas when we came before us last fall. I went there myself and I saw that it was an unfinished structure with open doors and open windows. So how is something that had no, that had stop orders, being allowed to continue being built?
It'll be finished, that 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 time we stopped. And the way it is now, it's not finished, it's still. It's still uh halfway open. We have the roof, the roof. The back one, exactly, the roof, the roof is on, so it's not.
My knowledge, I thought, you said about cities.
Yeah, that's why I started saying.
Well, we we have one thing which is absolutely, I I don't know how the solution to it, we have one foot. Between the, you know.
So that's a mistake, I'm not sure why is that, it's not one foot between units, it's sixteen feet between the units, I don't know. What happened there, sixteen feet.
But it's supposed to be.
Something on that agenda.
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Do we know how many stop orders they violate?
I don't.
I know. But I think it was more than one.
It was several, we know that it was these several requests.
So I'm sorry, for that back building, for that building, there's sixteen feet between.
And they've got sixteen, so it's short on.
On each side. There's sixteen feet on both sides.
Probably the pipe, what was it, search?
Correct, and then combines with, they could, and now we're here to fix this mess.
Well, missing nine feet on each side.
Correct, that's.
And there's still exposed propane tanks between these buildings?
Um. Not to move this, is there, is it for painting, next to the building?
Is as a, when I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry about that.
I don't, I I I can't recall, but if there's a, if there's a thing that can be moved to the other side, there's.
Yeah.
There's no problem, yes.
If you're gonna reduce the fire setbacks, then you also should reduce the the fire issues, like.
Sure, we'll definitely remove that for painting, we're here now to clear up this mess that has been here, that has been made, we're here to clear that up. Um and we'll definitely, that could definitely be a condition on the approval, not an issue at all.
And what about the um walls and materials?
It's gonna be two hour fire rated, uh it's gonna be two hour rated fire. Two hours fire rate plywood on both buildings. This building, unit twenty six, the new unit. Unit thirty and, and also on the other side, it's gonna be two hour rated on both of the buildings.
Now, the issue wasn't the number of units, it has never been the number of units in this development, and it has always been the lot coverage. So I'm confused how you're saying that the number, combining two single units is going to reduce the lot coverage in a way that meets the requirements here.
There was originally four variances were requested, this project, one of them was to increase the units. That is not, I believe, is on the agenda anymore, and that has been clarified. Because of this, dock coverage is still an issue, increase the dock coverage by one point one percent. And that's why we're here to do it here.
But the agreement was to reduce another building, so that you could build something new. And that's where I'm confused, how are, how is the zoning board, are we to grant? The permission to in to increase an a a building without removing something as was originally agreed by the.
That was originally, we're gonna remove the old building. Of four, but then. It was cost a lot of money, we figured, so we figured at that time that we're not gonna. Remove it, because it's gonna be too expensive, so we only put up for just one. One, just one duplex.
So so they broke a covenant to save money.
Well, I guess a practical question I have is. To get to the uh twenty nine point six, did you have to remove that building plus this one, or was that just assuming that the? The bill, all the buildings were gonna stay?
The twenty nine point six is a, I mean, I guess the word, I guess is the right word for it, even though it's, I guess, suggesting. The previous one was twenty eight points. Twenty eight point five, it was without this building is twenty eight point five, with this building is twenty nine point six. That's what everything, concise as is.
Everything. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't with the removal, cause then we'd have a math problem.
And now we would like to request on the board if we could work together to fix this issue and.
Can how do you, how do you fix the fact that you build buses? When you were building, how do you fix that? How do you fix trust when that happens? I I really, I mean, that's what it's gonna come down to, you're asking us for certain things and you broke a public trust. In a egregious way.
To to clarify, though, the the board, when it votes on this, is gonna go through the elements for an area variance, you know, it as far as violations, that is a separate. A separate piece that goes before the town court, we'll be dealt with that. They do have court schedule. We'll be dealing with, we'll be dealing with fines.
To the courts, there's violations, there's so many other violations.
There's, we just wanna, Jordan, switch and hatch. What's a legitimate nightmare to get in there? As for the fire department.
We can get in with a, with small apparatus. You couldn't get any big apparatus in there.
Ladder truck.
The the turn is, the turn and the uh the width is not there, and it's, it's not a a hard pan road. After the one gate, it's all mud, you have sidewalks, but you would never get, you would never be able to get a large piece of apparatus in there.
Okay.
And as it stands right now, if one was to go, they would all go.
They're all gone.
But that, that's a.
We actually. Made a new road. It's basically, if you come into the site. Over here, let me see, how like. We come over here, here there's a road, and we came over here, but we added. From here coming back down over here, so basically, there's two roads, one over here, a paved road. Wall lined up. You see two light up, all light up.
There's another paved road which adds to a lot of coverage, so is that calculated in what we're looking at or not?
We, sorry, it's not.
That is not calculated, that's actually a point that is not calculated.
Okay, so we need to.
That will, that will be calculated and. That's something that could potentially remove if the board does not want it there, that is.
A paved road, you're gonna remove a paved road?
It means it's lot coverage. Lot coverage is lot coverage, I I mean, I don't believe that a board like that remove, I don't believe that a board like that remove, but.
Actually, the paved road was only made just for the purpose that if there is a fire. Fire truck can go on it, you don't wanna come to the lot.
I I feel we have a lot of outstanding issues.
I have I have a question for this, this paved road is engineered to hold a forty ton fire apparatus?
No, but we could work in there.
At least twenty feet wide and an area where we can actually turn around?
If not twenty feet wide, if not. Means fire apparatus, I mean, small fire apparatus could probably get in there.
But if I have to get my ladder truck in there, which is forty ton.
A suggestion for. That issue regarding fire is, we will be willing, I mean, if it's something that the board would like to see. We could fireproof the back wall as well, with the fireproofing both side walls, being that it's gonna be very hard to get to the back. It's something that we could put into our prior separation there as well.
Well, hypothetically, back, you don't, right, you'll, you're getting the additional land for that, so that's not a variance that you need.
We are not right now proposing to to buy property off them, being that it's gonna be a long process and be a lot of improvement.
Well, that was one of the solutions, that was gonna be a really factor. So you're giving up that option to actually.
If that's the boards. If that's what the boards want, then that's what we're gonna have to do, but it's something that we're not, we're not looking to, it's a formal process. It has a severe, I'm sure it has a.
Is the sense of, can you agree on this, um what, how can we vote?
I'm.
Or and and I'm hearing that there might be a site inspection, and we're gonna be doing. So I think we have to leave this one open still.
We have a decision to make. Are we allowing? A building that is supposed to be twenty five and is sixteen? And we increase not coming, which now we know is a little more than what they're saying, because there's an additional work.
And so what is the end result of the voting against?
I.
The the petition to the Supreme Court to remove the building, sorry?
It goes to court.
It would have, it's gonna go to court for the the town and then. As far as the violations go, and then the town board would have to look at whether. Um enforcing. The building basically being torn down to be an option, so that would be if there's no approval.
In this case, realistically, I'll probably go for Article seventy eight. Um. Because the.
Sure, well, none, none of the.
Please.
None of the other buildings we should, they are now even as less. The other buil- the other buildings we stay there, are are only fifteen feet. Over here, all of them have less. And then over here, even if it's a little less, if we fireproof the wall. Actually, we spoke to Greg, he said that time they are inspired to the wall on the outside. They'll go along with it, you know, you're still concerned, whatever it is. But the bottom line is, building is up. It's a nonprofit organization we have, we're not getting a penny from these. Students over here. And they're actually students, which they're starting grad year, and it's a college which we have. And they're coming out here in the summer, and if you feel that just. Penalize the congregation and tear down the building. Pay you, but it's up now, so what do you want, we should do, we just throw out money for the congregation? But you also know the local ethics. You also know the local ethics. A local, it means that you don't make separate, you know, you can't make distinctions in certain cases when you have to maintain standards. And that's also a principle, and so if we allow for this, we establish precedents. Yeah, but but you gotta understand that all the other buildings, I'll show you, every building which we have over here, I mean. Are only fifteen foot.
Right.
So and this and this one, we have nineteen. So the world, it it it's with a couple of foot which we didn't realize was a mistake. I'm actually pleading to see that how we can technically. It's not like a money profit making over there, it's a nonprofit organization, they have a lot of non- such organizations they don't handle.
It's also, it's a bungalow colony or it's a camp, what what is, what is the two?
I saw that you, it's a, it's a, it's a bungalow county, the students, the people over there are married people who study all day. They are. Not students, they're married people that they study.
But it's a, it's a, it's a residential.
It's a residential bungalow county, it's not, I can tell you.
It's summer, it's a, is it a summer campus of Yipro? Or is it a?
I think the more important thing is just focusing on the.
Sure.
The area variances, the uses and.
We will do, we'll vote on this, but then don't we need to hear from them again for this paved road and the increase in lot coverage that that means?
I would recommend, if if you can get just the updated lot coverage with that, coming back for the next, I, there's probably, we're in a point by perking the voting. I would just get the updated numbers, so that's gonna be part of the vote.
Okay.
And then, you know, obviously, there's a lot of comments, so Moishi can take that into account and. So if you leave it open.
In the meantime, I also, because we don't have access, we we haven't been able to see the updates to the building, I wanna make sure that there's.
We'll be having a meeting, me and you, on the site.
Please.
For all of us.
All of us.
I mean.
Not as a board.
I don't have a high port to do this.
But the thing that I wanna make sure.
No more U two.
No more two, but I don't wanna hump a fence.
Yes.
That is an open, that's apparently an open construction site still, is safe. For anybody, and especially small children who like to climb into structures, you have an unfinished building.
It's inviting.
Sixteen feet from the next door's neighbors, it's an inviting place for there to be trouble and safety issues. So please do, in the meantime, while this is being sorted, everything in your power to keep that that important off.
Sure, that's.
In an impermeable way.
What?
Is currently occupied or?
The house is right now raining, and that's it.
Okay.
But that that's as a climbing through the window, it's, you know, like explorer, it's a playhouse right now. And so therefore, you're gonna have to close any of the um openings that would invite someone inside.
Excellent point, and.
We'll see you next month.
We're being, we, it tells us saying not to vote.
Yeah, that would hold off, and then if you can just, if you have anything from Greg on the issues, uh you mentioned earlier, if you can just send that over.
No, it's a more.
So we'll.
Jordan's gonna take a look too and see what's in the file, just so we can piece all that together.
See if I can put together from certain credit section, yeah.
So the good, the good news is that this is not open.
Sure.
You're not walking away with a no. Uh but we need more information.
So next month.
So we can vote, we would.
I mean, I would single court off the area. Excellent point.
Come back with, you know, you've heard our comments and our concerns, come back with information to satisfy those concerns.
Thank you very much.
I really would appreciate it, you know, and about the things which I have, what I'm saying, I'm sorry. Yourself, the board, whatever is that which. Which we actually didn't have. Permit or whatever is. We relied on that, and it was a mistake of them to, every state uh to be. A apology. When you order us to sit down in front of the buildings and and make a wall. You have to wonder.
We don't have two different rules. Rules for people that don't have money. Rules for people that don't have money and different rules for people that do have money, we don't have different rules like that.
All right, that's all, that's all in front of, uh. The court, so let's.
Move on, yeah.
Move on to the next application, got marching orders, thank you.
All right, where are you going now? Lucas and Mari.
Nope, KJ States.
Oh, okay, KJ States.
Oh my god.
We'll be next, that's this one.
Okay, sorry, we'll have different agendas, I think.
Yeah, that's. Thank you.
Basically, Mr. Jerry, in summary, I mean, this is what we're looking forward to, because the roofs over the decks is similar to what this going to improve for, um, for the state, same, same, same thing.
And we, during our working session, we said that because this wasn't on the agenda that was made public to the public prior to last night, that we should wait to vote on this, so that the public can also do their due diligence.
Yeah, we had a, there was an oversight, it didn't end up on the agenda until late last night, so just in case there was anyone that did wanna comment, we just wanna hold the public here and.
So, so the mailing did go out to the certifi-, to the paper, as you recall, last meeting, it was published in the paper for the last meeting. Where the certified did not go out, so it's kind of a.
Yeah, no, that was, that was our bad, but I.
But you're, you're.
No problem, it's fine. Fine.
Okay, thank you.
So we have to come back next month, I guess.
Yeah.
Any more questions on this, for the board, what?
I still, as I said last meeting, but never in my tenure on, on the zoning board and coming to meetings for six years now. Have I ever seen the zoning board just grant the ability to like build. Sidewalks wherever they wish, it's part of a plan, and it's part of a specific site plan that we get to see.
Well, maybe because of this issue with, with the two thirty-nine, where they want sidewalks out to the road, they're asking for, which I, I mean, I could. Put to a plan, that may clarify.
Yes.
And the plant, the planning board definitely will want that, um.
I'm sure they will, yeah, but we have to go back to the planning board once this water issue is resolved, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I think just to.
But that's, but that's definitely doable, right?
Part, that's doable. Absolutely.
Sure. Yeah, I just don't think it makes sense for us to grant, do whatever you want with extra lot coverage, that doesn't seem.
Well, it's not a whole handed request, it's thirty percent, but if it's, we'll.
Yeah, I, I wanna see this.
If it's there, use it, and, yeah, and put it as in, you know, illustrated.
Okay. No problem.
Perfect, no problem.
This open lots, uh, are you using sidewalks or is your side street sidewalks?
Well, the sidewalks on, on there, on the plane now, which are part of the impervious, part of the lot coverage computation, but the, the, the county and the state DOT is asking for more sidewalk. Out to. Not our side, it's, it's mostly. Side of, on our property, but it's gonna be servicing to tap the, the public as opposed to the community. That would increase the lot coverage, that's, how much it's gonna increase, I'll, I'll show them on the plan, show you that number. So this technically our property, but we're doing a service for the town and county by, by putting.
Yeah, with the planning board on, on that corridor, as projects are getting approved on all the maps, they're putting the sidewalk in, so theoretically, at some point in the future. All these sidewalks can be built and connected as kind of the, the hope.
Well, in some cases, we've got easements, permanent easements for future sidewalks, like on Zimmerman Road, so we're seeing kingdoms.
Everyone's gonna benefit with the sidewalks.
Correct.
So why, uh, why are we pushing off the vote?
It was.
For the sidewalk.
Because it wasn't ruled out. Due diligence.
Okay.
Okay, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now do, now. Now is it Lucas and Mari?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So. Questions? Where this, um, increase plan?
Um, how did this be, um, camper?
The camper is twenty-eight.
It's twenty-six to twenty-eight feet, that's a call me.
Yeah.
And then all the others are tents, then the treehouse, the treehouse is separate, so the treehouse camper and then.
Um. Treehouse, tree, it's less, it's lesser treehouse, because actually, we can't really do that in our trees, it's high and it's soft, so I'm calling it. Like a net with paddens, so it's like two paddens and a walkway. Um, so that's that one.
That's all with the campers.
Hmm, no, that's inside the old barn, which is existing.
It's an old barn space.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so there's, that's the, what was the treehouse, and then, um. And then a tent and a camper. And then the additional. Two tents.
And the tents are just on platforms, so they're, we might, might.
Yeah.
So.
What are the difficulties?
This is, that this is not, uh, uh, generally agriculture, we do not allow a retreat site. We do allow stables and riding academies, but it sounds like this is not that. Um.
It's a use variance.
Hmm?
Use variance.
We're looking at a use variance, in which case, when you came before us, we, uh, previously.
They gave a connection.
Hmm?
They gave a breakdown.
Yeah, but it, it wasn't completely, and now we know more of what's required to, or, or, or this, and there's, come to understand more what a use variance requires, and one of the things. That a request is why, uh, you would not be able to receive a reasonable return from all of the other uses in the agricultural property. And, sorry, allowed uses in the agricultural district. So everything from like a stable and a riding academy to. Hospital or medical, or, you know, basically, we need to meet with all financials of why this is the plan that makes sense, what the financial hardships are. And the other, um, criteria for a use application, which is more stringent as Dylan shared earlier. So it's just a need to, to really prepare.
Can you tease it out more?
Um, lo-, I mean, last time we did get the use variance, is there? Something?
Honestly, the reeducation of our board, um, in understanding what a use variance does require. So it means like full sets of financials, it means more information than, than, um. Than we have in this application. Okay, so.
Again.
Yeah.
One option. Yeah, I mean, typically, you'd wanna do like a pro forma and just kind of walking through the financials, but also demonstrating that the other uses can't be done on the parcel. Uh, one option would be an ag, agribusiness is allowed, um. It could be attenuated to get there, so I, another recommendation would be to go to, uh, TJ, the code enforcement officer, and request the determination on whether this use would be an agri, agribusiness. He would make a determination, yes or no, if the answer is yes. Then, at that point, that's an accessory use, you wouldn't need a use variance, if the answer is no, you could come to this board to appeal that. Um, so that could be kind of a parallel track too, while you're trying to, uh, you know, prepare for a use variance.
Is there a way else of pig lapping and make it more agriculturally based? In terms of the, your offering, you know, it's beyond sleeping, um.
A lot of these activities I see is, are synergistic, so they're sort of.
They're already there?
They. They're not already there, they would be in design as entire.
I'm saying they're already there in terms of being of an agricultural nature?
Yeah, so, so we, we are considering the, the possibility of, uh, you know, wha- what agriculture will play, whether it's apiaries, whether it's food forests, um. There are ways of integrating everything, so that it's a cohesive ecosystem, that isn't just, just an Airbnb, let's say, or just retreats.
So if you could expand your narrative in earnest.
Mm-hmm.
Not like a four speed, but.
Howe-, however, does the role of the horse in the stay not kind of bring the ag into the stay?
I think you're. Need a little bit more in terms of your narrative to make that argument.
Wh- what they're saying is an agribusiness is, is allowed in the agricultural districts, and so it, it's clear that this isn't a retreat site, that's for meditation and, and breathwork and.
Mm-hmm.
That, that it's actually an agribusiness, and we're not, I think what they're always trying to say is that it's in earnest, right, we're not trying to say.
We don't want you to, we don't want you to say something that we don't want you to say.
Right.
We want you to be able to say it, you know, more heartily, or, and I think that you're close. I just think you need to flesh it out a little bit more. So that it actually can embrace that definition.
Okay.
Um.
So, and, um, and so the. Enforcement would determine whether it fits the ag. If it can fit as an agro business, then you don't need any ramp.
No, you would have to, you would get a site plan review, but no variance.
Right. Yeah, you'd have to go to the planning board and get that reviewed.
But you're. You're pretty close, I mean, I'd say you're in a good spot, I think you just need to expand your vision and, and your offering. You know, as I said, in earnest, not just, you know, to get a fire, but, but in, in a compelling way.
Yeah, one, one question that I have, so, so you say the planning board would proceed, zoning board, how does, uh? That would be if the code enforcement officer gives you a determination that says this is an agribusiness, at that point, you would need to get just, um, site plan review. Um, under the bulk table, so then it would be a different path. So that'll be determinative on what the next step is. Okay. But. It probably makes sense to, you know, do your best to start pulling together the use variance data as well, just so you, you've kind of got two tracks. Okay, so do use variance, figure out the, the two tracks, get, um, talk, is it, is it Greg, TJ?
TJ.
TJ, I can see.
Yes, yeah. TJ is the next name, um, and then. Then in terms of the financials, trying to show hardship or trying to show. What is it that's?
Well, you wanna be able to show why you, um, have. Bumped it out as much as you have programmatically.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh.
Why are we allowed to add?
And that increase.
Well, I think you explained it a little bit in the document you had, but more directly, like you can't sell enough apples to make it viable, what is that numbers? You know?
Right. You, well, you can't receive a reasonable return from any of the other allowed uses.
Right.
And, yeah, people go, so.
So go down by down the ag.
It's not hard exercise. You're, you're, you're seventy-five percent there.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Um. Anything else for consideration, any suggestions, thoughts, concerns that we might be able to address today, give us?
Just look at it as a positive exercise, it's not, it's not that you have to say as much what you're not. But what you need in order to be able to. Um, realize the right kind of term.
Fair enough.
Sounds great.
Right, thank you.
I am very, you know, I shouldn't say I wanna, I'm really forward to you. My grandchildren wanna come.
Don't see the gods, they're waiting for it.
They're waiting.
Thank you very much. And then, uh, just one other. Since you're coming back again, if you just do and get it noted rise. Just for, for the records, yeah, just for, uh, the actual application. The proxy, right up page. Well, the proxy, just to confirm, there is a second, so the first proxy wasn't signed, but this is the.
Yeah.
That's when you brought in after, at the end, okay. All right, so that's fine, but yeah, if you can just get that noted rise and drop it off with, uh, Jen.
Excellent, okay, so we just re-semit the whole thing again, or was that?
Just that form's fine, yeah.
Thank you.
I think we have to re-semit another one, because I can move back.
Well, you know, in order to be around, you know, yeah, the most is the notice.
Yeah, because it's the same application, so there's no, no change in that, just so all the, all the boxes are checked.
All right, um, and I will call on.
Divisional.
Up for another transfer with David Rah.
I'll give you my number and generally call me up, I'm one time getting the sites.
That's the one, I'm, you know. Okay, um, how much is, um, so? Moishi, you wanna say something? Okay, you wanna read off?
No, I just, I.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Maybe where I was looking is incorrect, because there's no way that, that big of a building had been there previously, so we. I personally, I haven't been able to really see this site, and so I don't feel like it makes sense, I don't think it sounds like we've been able to see it. I think we need to actively visit in order to, to understand.
I wanna see it.
The other thing is, there was comment that it's a copy and paste, but it does look different from how it was previously, and it's, yeah, it is a different building.
It is a different building, it is.
Yeah.
The quarry is thirty-five percent larger.
Yeah.
That is correct, um.
What is its use, what, what is?
So this is a dormitory, a shul, a residential, houses in it. Um. I think that's mostly a room, lounge room.
We don't have a problem with the space, I mean, the area is.
Yes, this has a fully compliant FPA thirteen, rules of three courses.
We don't have, uh, we only have from the height.
So, so everything is good except the height.
Everything is good.
Evidence of proof by the planning and.
Planning board approved the site plan and.
So the only thing that you want is the roof to be able to go from thirty-five feet to forty-two feet.
And it's a join to an existing building, is the part that I also don't understand.
Correct, it is.
It's.
Connected on the site, I mean, this is a kitchen over here, there is a hallway, about a twenty foot hallway, think from one building to the next. Are you familiar with this, that we, you're probably there?
We have a right to hold up on voting, so that we can see it in it, knowing however, that what we're looking.
That's the first, first, that's the first one's the question.
The question is, that's.
What does he want from us?
He, what he wants, what he wants a variance because of the roof.
It was a variance.
Okay.
That's it, right.
That's it, I'm trying to.
Exactly, it's, if you all allow to be very high, the building.
So we're talking all about the. Yeah, I.
And they wanna put it to court.
So instead of making a flat roof, we're doing a. Right, but when you're looking at a tall building, you're looking at an elevation. And then you can then envision what that higher building looks like. I mean.
Especially if it's a joint.
That means not being enough for this summer.
Okay, well, okay, th- this is the process of, of this board. And so.
We got that.
Yes. Um, one thing, uh, with, with the proposal that you sent. It was really difficult to orient, like I, part of the reason I wanna go back is because there's no road names, so I had no idea where this was. To. The driveway. It would be helpful if there was some form of orientation, right, like this was not rhythm legible, so. Couldn't figure out where it was, and if it's adjoining, if it's, if it's going to be joined to an existing structure. I think that it's worth investigating personally.
All right, um, send it to the board. One of. Vote.
I mean, as far as the, uh, it was approved for site plans, so the planning board did go through and procedure as far as how it fits and works with all the other buildings. So I, certainly, it can come into your, your conclusions, but it was reviewed as part of that review. Um, so, so that's approved right now with the thirty-five feet, so that's, at the end of the day, that's, everything else is looked at and. You know, the closeness to the other buildings, um, was part of that review.
Oh, so that's out of our, sorry.
The one, two, hundred, forty, forty-two, one, closer.
But I understand, so, uh, the other side concerns are ones that we really can't stand on. Or just insist upon. Like getting a sense of where the building is and.
No, I mean, I, if you feel that you need to see it to vote, I mean, I, yeah.
That they, you know.
So the, so the justice missed KJ Estates, because there was not the opportunity for the public to do due diligence. Wouldn't that make sense for the, to be the opportunity for the public to do due diligence, so that's my thought thinking.
No, no, I was just saying, that part was reviewed by the planning board, but you're a different board, so that's. Absolutely within your rights.
I, I, I'm not a member.
You might go also.
So, uh, I think you mentioned that you, the type of roof you're putting up, rather than a flat roof. Is because the flat roof would have more maintenance?
There's a couple of reasons against the flat roof, a flat roof, first of all, aesthetically, does not look the best. This is more maintenance of it, it's a very large structure, eight thousand, eight and a half thousand square foot structure, um, so it is going to require a lot of maintenance and a lot of, and. Costs obviously more and, uh.
So it's a matter of financing.
I wanna, I wanna add one thing, I'm sorry, I, I was looking at this project. There's more to it, if you do a flat roof, entire weight goes in the building and much higher beams, much stronger beams. Has to go in the building, because it carries all the snow loads inside the building, instead of going and leave, on the, give on the outside walls. Another issue of.
Is this some coverage, sir? Is this your body?
No, no, I was just doing a document project. No, I was just reading the document project.
Okay, okay, so are you with the applicant, are you one of the presenters for this for this proposal?
I'm just as a candidate.
You could comment at the public part.
Right, that's good.
So it's a matter of money.
Matter of money and.
I have a hundred thousand square foot building with a flat roof. I've never maintained it in twenty-five years, there's nothing to maintain. It's right across the street, you can see it from the parking lot.
Only. Impossible.
Pardon?
Impossible.
What's impossible?
Let's get it maintained in twenty-five.
The only thing I did do is put solar power on it, didn't maintain it.
Saves the roof.
Pardon?
That saves the roof. Putting solar.
Ah, the only reason I'm saying that, because I had a hundred and twenty thousand.
So different builders do different quality roofs.
And you have to, there's no such thing. Everyone has a voice that is valued, um I know that we're not of one mind over here, and if there's anyone else who wants to propose. You wanna vote, or you don't, you wanna make a motion? I'm not really sure, I I um I I see that the end result, I think is gonna be good. However, I think there's there are maybe a few more pieces that would make us feel more confident in that vote. What are you gonna visualize? Who votes? Nothing there.
I'm trying with the new maker.
Alright, I I mean. I don't say why not, we were talking about.
Motion to vote.
Okay, and then what was the uh?
Motion to prove.
Motion to prove.
We we we, we go through the whole process. We go through the questions and then.
Oh, you're asking those questions, okay, okay.
And that photo is from the picture.
This is a rendering.
This is the actual.
This is how it's gonna look.
And there's no adoration.
There's no, and that could be a condition on approval, more. Some more here, the condition of approval, such a wolfy, you know, going to.
Um, if I need. You have to inform the voting is, with the questions on it?
Hi.
It's while we're waiting, I have never had anybody up on that other than the. Excuse me, I'm talking. I have sold panels about five years ago, the roof just twenty-five years ago. There are different qualities of roofs.
I. I'll agree to that. Okay, alright, we're gonna go to the questions for the area variance.
Wait, sorry, I just also wanted to ask, do we have clarification on the fire, on the fire question, is this actually, uh is it an aesthetic thing or a fire issue? That buildings are not permitted until above thirty-five feet, because I think that's important.
If I can answer that, the code enforcement officer myself, um. I am a New York State certified code enforcement officer.
In an over yourself life.
New York State does have a lot of laws that which kind of building, which kind of uses could be at which heights, there's a reason why proposing the basement, proposing to have the shul, the first word, there is a reason why we're doing all that. Um, or regarding, in regards to New York State fire code, New York State has one fire code, and this is don't be following the fires of New York State fire code, there's a reason why we have sprinklers, an FPA thirteen sprinkler system installed in this building that. Fire wise is fully covered, New York State does a great job when they fire code, it's thousands of pages on it.
Where did we hear about the ladder problem? From you about this project?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, it could be written up the code, but I'm just saying that the local resources.
They get it, then it's a stretch to get it to forty-two?
It's, yeah, I have a seventy-five foot ladder, you can't be, at the last building, we put our ladder off, and when it collapsed, it was two feet, two feet from my truck, as we're just building a collapse, when it went down, so. Jordan's hundred foot ladder truck couldn't even get it into the site, so.
Do we have that for both of you, that you both agree on that?
I did not, that I could not, my ladder truck cannot.
Would not be able to get to the.
Into it even, I ended up being on the lawn in order to try to go around.
That's why this is amazing, that sprinkler system.
Yeah, I guess, Jordan, as far as the sprinkler system goes, would that be a mitigating factor, as far as the necessity? I I have no idea, that's that's an earnest question.
I don't wanna ignore the experience that you bring to the discussion.
Um, I mean, it's gonna be over three stories, so it's, and it has to have a sprinkler system.
But as far as the, I guess, as far as the function.
Would would it achieve the desired outcome of?
And if that's not a fair question, you can say it's not a fair question.
Might have to look into that question, because.
Weren't there sprinkler, I thought I'd be, I'm sorry, I was inside the building also, I'm sure, I don't know if you're right, weren't there sprinklers there? Cause I know I I saw something in the ceiling, and obviously if there were, it didn't prevent the inferno that happened anyway.
Jordan, was that bad in the building?
It was just after, it was after summer, it was just after summer. I mean.
That's a man that did it, I should like. I see fire people coming with something, I don't know that, your conscience, I didn't ignore that information, I just, I'm looking for something. You know, I don't wanna walk away from what you're saying, um.
It doesn't matter the feet that are my my department, thirty-five feet, forty-two feet, twenty feet, I still couldn't get my ladder truck in there because of the the site plan and how the roads going in and out is, it wouldn't, it wouldn't allow me to bring my ladder truck in. Lotsheld's ladder truck is a little bit more narrower, uh and the shorter wheelbase, they can get in better places than than I can get in, if they're gonna have issues. So not the height, that's probably concerning, is the roads, which would be a planning board issue.
Yeah.
We could, um, wanna recommend, we could make it wider road here, it's something that, that is going to certainly make a wider road here, I think will greatly benefit everyone. Um, make a wider road here.
You'd have to make the roads wider, you'd have to take a lot of those trees down, and you'd have to make the grade less, at at least be at least a less than a fifteen percent grade on that road going in.
So it's not just a wider road?
If that is a sign factor, it's saying that we could do it, make a high access, if I could access the roof, that's make that.
Well, since the history of the fire on the, of the site, I mean, you know, you have to do a mental experience, or you always wanna be held accountable in what it is. Um, alright, um, we can go through the questions, and then we can have a motion, and then um.
You can also, you could also request, like, from the letter from the fire department, that is something that we've done task, right?
Planning board.
Okay, alright, so the first question is whether an undesirable change will be produced in character of the neighborhood that will be detrimental to the nearby properties? No. No. State, no, no. Okay, uh so that's, can the benefit be sought by the applicant, by another method other than the area variance?
No, yes.
Yeah.
I would say yes as well. Um, who who else is voting, I'll see you're voting, yeah, yes. I'll be, I'll be thirty-five floor. Whether the requested area, Ellie, Ellie, what are you, yes or no? Whether the requested area variance is substantial?
That's a good one.
No, but I'm gonna say no as well.
No.
Not creative? Yeah, whether the self-created.
Did you pitch tool or double source?
Yeah, I know, maybe I'll just use uh, uh, the question.
Know this.
Are you there? Four questions, four questions, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse affect uh effect, impact on the physical, on the physical or environmental conditions in the district or neighborhood? I would say no.
Read that.
Yeah, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse at um impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district?
No.
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 Um, did we have four noes?
As everybody.
Yeah, well, I'm actually, I would say yes, because I do believe the fire issues are, could be an adverse impact, but uh but nonetheless, nonetheless, the uh, the nose carries, was the alleged difficulty self-created? Uh, which should be, which might be relevant, but not necessarily precluding granting the variance.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Would you? Was it self-created?
I mean, yeah, I don't believe they brought it going down, so.
Oh, that's not your point.
No.
I'll see where it was self-created. Okay. Well, they're asking for a higher roof, they, that's what they created, they asked for a higher roof. So we have um three yeses and noes. But remember, that one does not necessarily preclude our being able to pass, so now do we have uh a motion to um?
Personally, no.
Oh, good, um, negative death, we need a, um. Is there a uh a positive?
Would be a type two, so we we do the neg that.
Okay, negative that.
Motion.
Okay, I'll favor.
Hi.
Hi, okay. Alright, now do we have that, we can uh, uh, someone wanna give the language of a proposed motion? The motion is to approve, approve uh of the raised roof, or is roof of thirty-five to forty-two? And.
Um, on that, Moi she did mention they'd be willing to do a condition, just that there be no livable space in that extra seven feet, the board wants to add that.
Sure. And also, we were going to have all request a letter from the fire department, um, suggesting um, various means to be able to.
He needed more information about whether or not it was safe or not, he could have asked the.
The chief says it doesn't make a difference for his ladder.
The sample quick not gonna change the side, the one of his truck.
How many people do we need to?
Got a full, full load of five.
Okay, alright, so the motion to approve uh the roof raised to forty uh two feet.
With the condition?
With the condition of no livable uh is based in the extra livable area, there's space in the extra area. Okay? Second motion, second. All in favor?
Well, can you read that back again?
The motion is to approve the roof being raised to forty-two feet with the condition that there be no livable space in the extra area. In the extra roof area.
Okay, so the extra seven feet from thirty-five to forty-two.
Alright. Alright, I'll favor. So we have three to. Next question is, who opposes? Okay, and all opposed? Three in favor. And two.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Ellie, we gotta complete meeting here, we're gonna vote to adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
Where's the adjourn?
Okay, and I will pull together a resolution.
Do I do that kind of news?
Yes.
Alright, so there there was.
And then I'll draft like a formal.
It will be a resolution.
Meeting was over. So I'm not the only one.
Just so we can get it. Good night.
It's gonna be a, I mean, it's gonna be a question very still, that's.
There's a nice building.
How you doing?
George, if I get a sticker now for a product expired, you know, he gets written up with you?
For what?
Turn up to be the month that you get it done. Yeah, so I should wait for you.
Well.